We hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, good. At this time, we're gonna switch to Kathleen. We're going to go to Zoom. Public comment period, is that right?
Okay. If you are participating via Zoom and wish to make a public comment, please use the raised hand button in the Zoom meeting portal. If you're using a phone, press star nine on your telephone keypad, then press star six to unmute your phone. When it is your time to speak, you'll be requested to unmute your microphone and speak for the time allotted by the chair. Your microphone will be muted upon completion of your comments. Unless otherwise, directed by the chair, speakers will have three minutes to comment.
Thank you very much. Okay, we're going to switch the agenda around a little bit. Five A, the Don Hugh Truck Center is now going to be the last item of the evening. And we're going to go right into five B, Body Works Conditional Use Permit at 1440 Jason Way. Staff.
Chair Seifert, I am good.
Evening Commissioners, my name is Greg Vine, Associate Planner with the city. Today, I'll be presenting a conditional use permit, U 2023-009, for Steven Guerrero, representing 805 Body Works, to establish an automotive paint and body shop to be located at 1440 Jason Way, Suite 121 and 123. This project site is 2.12 acres and is located at the southwest portion of the city, just southwest of the intersection of West Bed Arabia Road and West Gate Road. The site is Zoned PDCM, Planned Development General Commercial, and is surrounded by Property Zone PDCM to the north, east, and west. To the south are Property Zone PDM1, Planned Development Light Manufacturing. Existing uses surrounding the project site consist of manufacturing and industrial uses as well as warehousing uses that support local agricultural production. So the site was approved for a 32,300-square-foot multi-tenant industrial building with a planned development permit in 2002. The building was constructed in two phases, with the second phase and final build-out completed in 2006. This project proposes to reuse two existing tenant spaces at the southwest corner of the existing building. So here we have a street view of the existing multi-tenant industrial building, looking southwest from Jason Way. And this is a photo of the exterior of the two suites that'll be utilized by 805 Body Works, highlighted here in yellow. Each suite has one man door and one bay. This proposal would be to establish an automotive paint and body shop, reusing two existing tenant spaces totaling 2,850 square feet. This use requires the approval of the conditional use permit by the planning commission. Within the space will be a spray booth, paint mixing room, compressor room, and office space. Operational hours are from Monday through Friday, from 7:30 a.m. to 5:30 p.m., with four employees, two employees each shift, working on approximately four to six vehicles per day. No new structures are planned and all work will be wholly contained within the existing building. No outdoor storage is proposed or permitted with this conditional use permit, which is consistent with the existing planned development permit for the site. Lastly, no exterior site improvements are planned as part of this semittal and none are required. So this is the existing site plan along with the multi-tenant building. The site consists of existing parking spaces, drive aisles, trash enclosures, and mature landscaping. The project site was... The complex was approved of 77 parking spaces to be shared amongst each of the tenants, which is approximately three to four spaces per tenant. As an automotive use, the parking required by the municipal code is calculated per automotive bay and therefore this project requires six parking spaces. These spaces would be located generally adjacent to the tenant spaces, which is consistent with the shared parking plan for the center. Now, these spaces would be utilized by both employees and customer vehicles and waiting in queue. So here's a look at the interior of the existing building, showing the tenant spaces throughout these spaces, aside from this project brought before you tonight, are occupied by various industrial uses, including auto parts suppliers and HVAC installers. So here we have the floor plan for the proposed project. The spray booth, mixing room, compressor room, and office space would be located within the southern tenant space and the remainder area will be utilized for body repair. So this concludes staff presentation. Staff recommends that the planning commission, by motion, approve conditional use permit, U 2023-009. I am available, should you have any questions. And I believe the applicant representative is here as well.
Thank you, Greg. Do we have... Do we have any expertise? I don't see any. Do we have a presentation from the applicant? Please state your name and address for the record. Thank you.
I was not able to read on the screen, but for clarification, the restrooms and the office are existing from the original construction or from one of the previous tenant improvements. So the only thing that's going in is the paint booth and also the related mixing room that is required as a part of that. So again, very straightforward, standard conditions that we see normally for paint booth, screening of the exhaust equipment, modification of the electrical is really the only thing that we're doing aside from the two small interior rooms. So we appreciate staff effort on this and we make ourselves available for any questions.
Thank you, Tom. Do we have any questions? Commissioner Dickerson.
Post spray booths. Are those pre-existing? Are they already in there? Are you building all that out?
The mixing rooms, the two smaller rooms that have the shaded area are new proposed interior non-bearing partitions because the mixing room requires a two-hour rating enclosure because of the combustibility. The paint booth is a pre-manufactured unit. Basically, it's just slide it in and hook up to electrical and fire sprinkler systems.
Okay. And the office is pre-existing?
That is correct.
Okay. Tom, what are the businesses adjacent to the space?
I'm honestly not certain. I know immediately east of it, east of us, the two suites were previously occupied by Ostini family with the Hitching Post, where they were doing their flash freeze, the barbecue and flash freeze. They ended up closing that. I'm honestly not certain what's in there now.
Maybe I can ask staff?
Yeah, Commissioner Dickerson, I actually did a business license search of that structure today. And aside from those two uses that I had listed, the auto supplier and the HVAC, those were the only active licenses within that building. And I think they're at the further north end of the building.
So they're not adjacent?
Correct.
Okay, and is that true of the back spaces as well?
I'm not sure about those back locations, the ones...
To the rear of those spaces? Okay. Okay, that's my questions.
When you say "to the rear", you're thinking to the south? Because there's nothing to the south of it.
I think he means behind the adjacent wall behind.
Yeah.
Behind it is what formerly used to be Hardy Diagnostics. I'm sorry. It was dental... Jim Spolino's dental processing. It's now occupied by Hardy Diagnostics.
Staff, can you bring up the building plan? The entire... That's at night with the lights off. Okay. Yeah, I'm curious about the ones to the east.
Yeah, that is where Ostini was, but I don't know what's in there. I know Ostini closed up his operation at that location.
Okay, so both adjacent sections are basically vacant at this point? Is that accurate?
That's what it appeared to me as I went through the project. Again, just, I was only concerned with the one because everybody else should be licensed.
Right. Is that true, staff? Yeah?
Yeah, Commissioner Dickerson, I think so. I had driven through that property a week or two ago and a lot of the doors are closed, not a lot of signs on the building.
Okay. And the only reason I ask is because if you're gonna be doing any auto body work, I wanted to make sure noise, all of a sudden a tenant doesn't show up and impact the tenants next to them. But it sounds like everybody's... There aren't anybody there and so anybody new coming along will know what they're getting, so... Okay, thank you.
And all the surrounding neighbors, as I say, to the south is Hardy Diagnostics, the immediate southerly area, because I did that project as well years ago. That is a huge parking lot that separates, you know, the buildings. And what you see there, to the south of the highlighted areas, actually solar panels over the parking lot. And then to the west is another industrial complex, the first unit. And again, talking about the southwest corner, the more southerly unit is a church. And then immediately above it, I believe, is ag harvesting company.
I guess I do have one more question. That is, a lot of times with these body shops, you have cars being pulled in and out of the spaces and, at least for the course of business hours, that cars are being rotated through and that sort of thing. Do you foresee any cars being pulled out and spaces being used in the parking lot? Or is it all interior?
The more northerly unit is where he would have the spaces for the cars that are being painted, being prepped. Then they'll basically pull them into the paint booth. Then they'll drive them back into that northerly bay for drying. So usually, they're not there for very long. They may be pulled out on occasion just to be on the lot to make space, waiting for the owners to come pick them up.
Okay.
But there isn't any long-term use for that.
Okay, thank you.
I'll add, Commissioner, it is in number two of the conditions. Also, oh, excuse me. Commissioner? Commissioner Lopez?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The only question I had to follow up to Commissioner Dickerson's question is vehicle storage on the planned development permit, condition number two for Community Development Department. And I just want to make sure that there's gonna be adequate storage in that northern unit.
Now, squeezing them in, they can get four cars in there right now. They'd prefer to have just two because it gives them workspace. But if they need to keep a car overnight, they can actually pull them up, park in tandem within the unit.
Okay. I just would hope that he'd have a successful business there and maybe, you know, thinking in the future that he may need more space. And I don't know if that was something the applicant desired or not.
He is a first-time owner leaving from another firm, so this is his first venture. So he really wants to start small and just be successful with what he's got.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure. Commissioners, anything? Yeah, I'm familiar with this site, Tom. I... There's been a lot of different businesses that I've done business with on there. There was AA Lumber for a while, the Door Company. There was a, I think Miller Boats was in there, Top Notch Heating and Air. There's quite a few different... They all seem to be well within this range of use. And with the spray booth, there's no... There's no toxic fumes or anything. He's doing it legally, so I can't see where that would be an issue. The... That two-hour fire, the paint mixing room, that has to be a two-hour?
That is correct.
I didn't know that. Okay. Well, I really don't have any further questions. So thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, we're going to open a meeting up to the public. I don't have any written communications. Do we have anyone on Zoom?
No, we do not.
Okay. I am going to, and I'm guessing there's no rebuttals if we don't have any public comment. Is everyone done with their questions? Okay, I'm gonna bring it back. This hearing is closed and it's back to us for a discussion and a motion. Commissioners.
If there's no other discussion, I'll go ahead and make the motion.
Commissioner Dickerson.
We good? I move that the planning commission approved conditional use permit, U 2023-009, for the 805 Body Works Conditional Use Permit at 1440 Jason Way.
Do we have a second?
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that.
Commissioner Lopez. Do we have a vote? Or do we have to do a roll call? Well, let's do a roll call, please.
Commissioner Dickerson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Mohajer?
Aye.
Commissioner Blanco?
Aye.
Chair Seifert?
Aye. Looks like we're gonna have a new paint booth. Thank you very much. Okay, at this time, we're going to go to five C. Oh, boy, I'm gonna mess this one up.
Mr. Chairman, I have a conflict on this item. I'm doing some work for the owner, so I'm gonna recuse myself on this project.
Thank you, Commissioner. We'll see you in a few minutes. Casa de Bambini, daycare school conditional use permit at 607 East Plaza Drive. Can we have a staff presentation, please?
Thank you, Chair Seifert. Commissioners. This presentation is for conditional use permit, U 2023-003, for Elizabeth Dawson, representing Casa de Bambini, to establish a daycare school within an existing office building located at 607 East Plaza Drive. This project site is .63 acres, southwest of the intersection of South College Drive and East Stoll Road. The site is Zoned CPO, Commercial Professional Office, and is surrounded by Property Zone CPO to the north, south, and west. To the east and further to the west are Property Zone PF, Public Facilities. Existing uses surrounding the project site consist of the Magna Maloney Funeral Home and Crematory to the north, Santa Maria Cemetery to the east, Bureau of Investigation to the south, and medical offices to the west. The existing site comprises of two buildings, one one-story structure and one two-story, for a combined 8,255 square feet and originally constructed for the purpose of a medical office building. The site is accessed from the southwest portion of the site by a standard driveway of approximately 24 feet and circulation occurs in a counterclockwise direction. The eastern parking lot is a one-way travel only and mature landscaping is planted throughout. Currently, 620 square feet of the southernmost building is occupied by a beauty shop and the remaining 7,635 square feet of the two buildings is unoccupied. Here's the existing site looking northeast from Plaza Drive. The building is comprised of light brown horizontal wood siding and brick veneer and roofing materials or concrete tiles. There are no facade improvements such as painting or siding changes proposed at this time. This proposal is to establish a daycare school within the remaining unoccupied 7,635-square-foot space of the two existing commercial office buildings. This use requires the approval of conditional use permit by the planning commission. The daycare will serve a maximum of 107 infant and toddler-age students with approximately 15 full-time staff members. Interior modifications are proposed to include the demolition of walls to provide space for classrooms, secure lobby spaces, toddler toilet rooms, staff office spaces, and storage. A 1,520-square-foot outdoor playground area will be established on the east side of the existing buildings and modifications of the drive aisles and parking areas will occur to accommodate the secure outdoor playground area. Due to these parking lot modifications, a reciprocal access and parking agreement is conditioned to meet municipal code requirements for parking, which we'll discuss later in this presentation. So this is the existing site plan combining in the floor plan of the existing buildings. As I had mentioned prior, the eastern parking lot is currently one-way travel in a counterclockwise direction. And additionally, there's an existing landscape median here, delineating the drive aisles. So moving on to the proposed site plan, starting at the right-hand side of your screen, the northeastern and southeastern landscape areas are enlarged. We got removal of the interior landscape median to accommodate two-way traffic and additional parking along the southern property line. We also have removal of existing parking spaces to the north to accommodate the secured outdoor playground area. In addition, safe passages of travel or sidewalks were added to the north to accommodate to... They've been added to the north of the parking lot and continue through the center of the two buildings. The white block near the center of the site represents the new reference location that has been reviewed and approved by the city's utilities department solid waste staff. With the minor modifications to the existing landscape areas, 21% site coverage is proposed, which exceeds the 15% minimum required by code. Here we have a 3D block graphic showing the proposed site improvements and building occupancy types. Both first-floor areas highlighted in turquoise will be utilized as classroom space while the purple second-floor space is proposed as staff offices and storage. The hatched turquoise area near the center of the model represents that 620-square-foot beauty shop that, again, is not included in this proposal. The outdoor play area and the indoor interior corridor between the existing buildings will be secured with six-foot metal fencing and security gates with panic hardware. And an existing six-foot masonry wall surrounds the remainder of the site on the northern, eastern, and southern property lines. So parking requirements for daycare uses is one space for every five children and one space for each employee. This results in 37 parking spaces required for the daycare use while three additional parking spaces are reserved for the existing beauty shop. With the need to maximize their outdoor play space, 23 onsite parking spaces will be provided. 14 additional parking spaces will be needed to meet the code minimum and the project has been conditioned to require a reciprocal access and parking agreement to be submitted to the city by the applicant. These spaces will be provided at the adjacent parking lot to the north at 600 East Stoll Road, the location of the Magna Maloney Funeral Home and Crematory, who have indicated their support of this arrangement. The additional 14 parking spaces required will be fulfilled by this reciprocal access and parking agreement and will be utilized for staff parking. Street parking is also available along the front edge of the property should the parents not wish to enter the site to drop off their children. And access would be provided through a secure entry gate at the western end of the existing buildings. A trip generation analysis for this proposed use was reviewed and approved by the city's Public Works Engineering Division and Planning Staff. Utilizing data from existing Casa de Bambini daycare in Santa Maria, it was determined the site would adequately support the proposed use. For child safety and to avoid traffic impacts, the project is conditioned to establish pickup and drop-off policies. Drop-off will last over a period of three hours in the morning and pickup will occur starting at 12:00 p.m. and ending at 5:00 p.m. All employees will be instructed in these policies and clients will be provided with written policies for pickup and drop-off. Additionally, the daycare center is conditioned to establish a parking lot monitor to direct safe circulation of vehicles and pedestrians during peak hours. This concludes staff's presentation. Staff recommends that the planning commission, by motion, approve conditional use permit, U 2023-009. I am available for any questions regarding this semittal and the applicant representative, I believe, is also available should you have questions for them.
Thank you, Greg. Do we have any expertise? I've had no communication. Do we have any questions for staff? Commissioner Blanco?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Greg, how does the... How does the parking lot for this project connect? Is there a walkway that connects over to the Magna Maloney parking stalls? Or how does that interface work on the north side of the parking lot?
Chair, I don't believe so. I'd have to defer to the applicant representative if...
Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Guillermo Perez, the architect, 709 East Stoll, Santa Maria. Chair Seifert and Commissioners. Looking at this site, it would be... It would be... There is no direct access. It is going across the parking lot to answer your question about the access on the east side. I don't know if there's... A different location for the parking, for the reciprocal parking agreement? Not a different location, the same site, just a more preferable location on that side.
Do you have anything to add, Commissioner?
Well, I was just gonna say, so parking there, you'd have to kind of go across the Magna Maloney lot to the street and come around? Is that kind of the idea?
I think what he's asking is, are you going to be able to get out of your car, walk across that grass lawn and right into the building? Or are you gonna have to go out to the street and come around? I believe that's the question.
No. It is going around the parking lot to the sidewalk.
So do you have to go to the street first and then come around to the building? Or I guess I'm not clear yet still. There is no direct connection to, along the east side, down to the sidewalk, and then over to the building? over to the building? Is that right?
Not currently.
Okay.
Yeah, that's something we can...
Seems kind of challenging, I guess, from my standpoint, and very, you know, challenging to try to get over to the building if you gotta walk down to the, to the street and around, but...
But it is staff parking only. No customers.
No, no customers.
Because it's all drop-off, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, all right, that was, that was my one question. And actually, so, so there is an existing fence along that, or you guys putting in a new fence along that edge? There must be a fence there, I guess, that same area that I'm, that I was looking at between, yeah, right in there, Cody, yeah.
Yeah.
If you saw that, or Greg, sorry. That area, so is there a fence? That's gonna be fenced off. There's no crossing there.
Right, we, for the safety, because the outdoor play is a big part of this school. So, we were intending on keeping, it's a block wall.
There's a block wall there that's gonna stay. Got it?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Mahajer.
Thank you, Chair. What is your understanding of the beauty shop's client slash staff traffic? Is the three parking spots provided sufficient for that?
I mean, we have visited the site pretty often. It's usually one or two cars.
Okay, and then as to the agreement with the funeral home, should the beauty shop need to utilize that? Is that only exclusive to the daycare, or are they gonna be added as a party since they're also a tenant there?
It's exclusive to the daycare because it would be full-time staff who are parking there in the day and coming back in the afternoon.
Okay. That was my question. He touched base on the wall for me, so thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Dickerson.
Yeah, can you bring up the parking again? So, and I'm sorry, just for clarification, the turquoise in the upper right-hand corner, that's all, that's all staff parking?
Correct.
Okay, so you, so you won't have any, you won't have any drop-off? You won't have any children coming through there? It's all adults? Is that correct?
Definitely not, no, staff parking.
Okay, that was my primary concern, but then that's fine. Thank you.
I'm not quite sure, you're taking both buildings? Building A and B?
Correct.
This is a very large facility.
It is, yes.
Yeah, a lot of kids.
Yeah.
I don't have a lot of questions on this one. So, we're going to go ahead and, I doubt there's any rebuttals. Is there any, we've got our questions in. I think, I think we're done here.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna close the public hearing, and we can take it to discussion or a motion.
Excuse me?
Yes. Did we forget something? Zoom? Zoom, zoom?
Yeah, we need to see if any of the public would like to speak.
Gotta zoom. Kathleen, sorry, I'm used to having you right here.
No one on Zoom.
There's no one on Zoom, so we're gonna go ahead and bring it back and have a motion or a discussion. Thank you.
Or in the audience.
Excuse me?
Any speakers in the audience?
I have no speaker slips.
Oh, right, okay.
So I'm guessing that's, right? Making me sweat here.
And no, no presentation by the applicant, I assume? He just answered a question.
I believe that was the presentation.
Was that the presentation? Okay.
Or was that just a question? Do you have a presentation for us, or are you good?
Okay.
We'll give you time if you need it. Okay. I'm gonna try one more time. Okay, and bring it back. We're gonna close it, and we're going to discuss and make a motion. Commissioners.
I, I just wanna, I don't wanna hog all the motions for the evening, so if other people wanna make the motion, but obviously, it's a service that's tremendously needed within our community. I really like the layout and the design of the, of the facility. We, I remember, I remember one coming before us a while back, and the whole outdoor play was done on the parking lot, and then they kind of had this squirrely thing where they would cut it off sometimes and allow it sometimes, and that nonsense is not here, that they devoted actual space to the outdoor and provided parking for their employees other places. So, I think they've done a really nice job, and a hundred and one kids, well, that'll get swallowed up right away, but it's absolutely needed. That's my comment.
Commissioners. Commissioner Blanco.
Yeah, I like the idea. Definitely agree that, you know, this is a good, good facility, good use for this building if it's not being used for medical. You know, my comment about the parking, you know, that's obviously, you know, I don't think it's ideal, but if it's staff parking and you don't have kids running across to the street, I think that, that's reasonable. The other, the other thing is, you know, the circulation, I think, could be a little challenging. I did like the layout, the way it was before, for the medical building to have a turnaround area. I realized that you needed to give some of that up for the outdoor play, so that makes sense, but I still kind of see it being a little challenging circulation-wise for, for getting in and out, but nevertheless, I think it's still, still a good plan. So, yeah, I think it's a very good use for the building.
Commissioner Mahajer.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I agree. I really like this project. I think that with the parking agreement, that's fine, understanding that it is staff only. I mean, parents aren't gonna be walking their children from the funeral home into the building, and I, I actually really like the layout of the building as well. It seems really secure, and safety is a priority here. I think that the location is good. It's not directly on an arterial street either, so that's all. Thank you.
If there's any place in town that needs liveling up, this is it. Really happy to see this going in here. We've got the, we've got the graveyard right next door, we've got the funeral home, and then we've got the, all the people going in for all their surgeries next door, we've got radiology right there. Yeah, we need some kids, we need some laughter. This would be a very good place for that. This building brings back bad memories, well, kind of bad and good to me. This is where the orthopedist used to be, Dr. Book. I've had quite a few, yeah, I've been there quite a few times, and not always pleasant, so it'll be a much better use for me. I like it. I did drive by it, and, and it's sad that it's just sitting there. It's a beautiful building, beautiful facility, and I can, I can support this. I'd love to see that thing fill with kids. So, at this time, we'll go for a motion.
Sure.
Commissioner Dickerson.
Yeah, and with your description, cremation places, cemeteries, things, I, I hope there's not gonna need to be need for a child therapist somewhere in there, so...
It is two thousand twenty-three.
Yeah, so there you go. All right, so, I move that the planning commission by motion approve conditional use permit U two zero two-three dash zero 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 three, the daycare school conditional use permit at six oh seven East Plaza Drive.
Do we have a second?
Second.
And can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Dickerson?
Aye.
Commissioner Mahajer?
Aye.
Commissioner Blanco?
Aye.
Chair Seifer?
Aye. You're all set to go. Congratulations. Can't wait to hear the laughter running up and down the hallways. Great, great project, thank you. And just as a side note, Commissioner, I did drive by that other location, and it is, they're not using it as a daycare.
Oh, is that right?
It must have met zoning. It's something else.
Yeah, I don't think it actually pushed forward, but I remember the presentation.
Yeah, it's, it's...
It was squirreling.
Yes, something like that. Yeah.
Yeah.
I haven't been in. Okay. Great idea. Okay, at this time, we're going to go back to five A Donahue Truck Center, and I'm going to be recusing myself for financial reasons, and I believe Commissioner Dickerson has different reason.
I'll be recusing myself for proximity to my own business.
And at that, we're gonna take off. We won't be back. So, have a good evening, and thank you very much.
See you tomorrow. Have a good night.
Thanks, buddy.
See you, have a good night.
Good night.
I was supposed to be the last meeting. Yeah, I'll stay here. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we'll go ahead and go to item five, I guess it's five C now. The Donahue Truck Center Plan Development Permit and Conditional Use Permit located at twenty-three thirty-seven Thompson Way. May we please have a staff report?
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Lopez. Good evening. My name's Cody Graybell. I'm a senior planner with the city, and I'll be presenting the Donahue Truck Center Plan Development and Conditional Use Permit at twenty-three thirty-seven Thompson Way, proposing commercial truck rental, sales, part storage, and administrative offices in an existing developed site. This item was introduced to the planning commission and public at the August third study session, and there's been no changes to date. Project site is in the western part of the city, and to the north of the site is Betaravia Road, to the south is West McCoy Lane, to the east is Skyway Drive, and to the west is West Gate Road. And adjacent development consists of various industrial uses, and there is a similar use to the project site that's adjacent to the west, and that is the Pepsi bottling plant here. The site is zone PDM one, Plan Development Light Manufacturing, and it's surrounded on all sides by industrial zoning, and the nearest sensitive uses are approximately a thousand feet away. Across Betaravia Road, there's a residential subdivision, and across Skyway Drive, we have another residential subdivision. The site itself is one point eight acres, and it contains a seven thousand three hundred fifty square foot metal industrial building. The planning commission approved a PD permit in two thousand for the industrial building, and ultimately established a food distribution operation that has closed and is no longer in business. This is a view of the site if you were on Thompson Way facing northwest. And the types of trucks available for sale or rental will include flatbed trucks, box trucks, and vans, and truck parking would be at the back half of the site, shown here, and could accommodate approximately twenty vehicles. There's no repair proposed, and ingress and egress would remain from Thompson Way. Four full-time employees would be utilized during a shift, and the applicant estimated there'd be approximately one to two customers per day coming to the site, and that about one time per month, there'd be deliveries for parts to the warehouse, and regular business hours would be from seven AM to five PM. The project requires thirteen parking spaces, and thirteen spaces are provided at the front half of the site. And one thing to clarify is there are no physical improvements proposed, so the site would be approved as it is developed. So next, I'm gonna talk about the land use briefly. Commercial vehicle rental and sales, the use proposed is not listed as a conditionally permitted use in the M one zone, the site zoning. It is conditionally listed in the CM or Commercial Manufacturing Zone, but the city's municipal code does give the planning commission discretion to conditionally approve the use, even though it's called out in another zone, as long as specific findings can be made. And there's three findings. The first is that the use isn't more obnoxious or detrimental than other conditionally permitted uses in the M one zone, that it falls within the intent and purpose of the zone and the general plan land use designation at the site, and that it's compatible with the adjoining land uses in the project vicinity. And this approval or denial, the determination that occurs tonight would be limited to the site only. It wouldn't apply to any other locations in the city. So staff did look at the other conditional uses in the M one zone, and we did highlight a couple very similar types of uses. One is truck terminals, and the other is the establishment of an RV storage yard. And they're similar because their operations both include the storage and parking and movement of larger vehicles. The site development requires paving, screening, onsite management, and administrative offices, and generally, the amount of traffic generated would be very similar. In particular, the truck terminal type of operation could actually have more trips than this type of development. And the next finding that has to be made is the compatibility with the intent and purpose of the zone and general plan land use. So the M one zoning district purpose in the city's code is, quote, "Designed and intended to accommodate light and industrial and design research facilities which are self-contained and whose processes are characterized by the low generation of adverse impacts and non-public oriented offices which do not provide services to or cater to the general public." And then the corresponding general plan land use designation of light industrial is, quote, "To accommodate industrial uses which contain the process within the building, do not generate negative environmental impacts, and which are most compatible with adjacent non-industrial uses." And staff does feel that this proposal meets both the intent and purpose of the zone and the general plan land use designation, because there really is no public orientation, heavier industrial-type intensity development, like repair is not proposed, and there's a very minimal number of trips that would be generated. Staff did some analysis, working closely with the engineering division, and we determined that essentially under ten PM peak trips would be generated from this proposal, and that reflects the low number of employees, customers, and monthly deliveries that would occur at the site. And the last finding is the land use compatibility in the project vicinity, and staff does feel that it meets this finding because, again, there's no repair proposed, and that is a condition of approval, number two of the project. The vehicle storage would be kept behind landscaping, behind a building, and screened fencing, which is another condition of approval, number twelve. And there are uses of similar intensity that have already been established, mentioned earlier, like the Pepsi bottling plant. And then lastly, like all projects, would have to comply with the city's performance standards for screening noise. So, that concludes staff's presentation, and we recommend the planning commission by motion approve the plan development permit, PD two zero two-three dash zero zero one-two, and conditional use permit, U two zero two-three dash zero zero five. The applicant is in attendance tonight and is available to speak. Thank you.
Thank you, Cody. Are there any questions of the commission for staff? Commissioner Mahajer.
Thank you. Quick question regarding the northern property line of, of the parcel. I noticed on the picture, I couldn't really tell if there was an exit or entrance onto that alleyway directly behind the parcel, and I was wondering if you could clarify, because it looked like it in the other visual map. But it doesn't look like it, correct? Right there.
Yeah, Commissioner Mahajer, I believe that there is a gate. The applicant clarified to staff that they would only be using Thompson Way, but I'd welcome the applicant to clarify if they'd like to.
Yeah, I think that was mentioned at the study session. Well, if we, no other questions of staff? Commissioner Blanco? Yeah, in that case, yeah, please give us a applicant presentation.
Great. CJ Horstman, MW Architects, which is in Aurora Grande, three three zero, South Halcyon. And thanks for looking at this project tonight. We've worked closely with staff, kind of to establish this use, a very low intensity use for this area, arguably much lower than what was existing and adjacent. To answer your question directly, commission member, I think there's no intention of using that back gate. The property owner would feel comfortable, if needed, to establish a permanent fence there, but that's not been conditioned, but all ingress and egress to the site will occur on Thompson Way.
Okay, that was just the clarity I needed. Thank you.
Any other questions of the applicant? Yeah, just, just for my clarification, the, the screening that's there, is that adequate for the screening that's required in the conditions?
Commissioner Lopez, yes, we determine that the combination of the fencing and the existing building, and the setback distance does provide adequate screening.
Okay, thank you. Anything else to add for the presentation?
I'll just agree with staff. This is a pretty low intensity use. Again, supporting uses...
Again, supporting uses, Donahue Truck Center has their repair facility right a little bit to the west there over on, I always forget the name, on West Gate. And then we are gonna be processing applications for an additional facility on a different site that should be coming to you. So this is a business that's really invested in this community, supports the ag community, supports the construction industry in Santa Maria by providing them these truck rentals for both tractor-trailers, for ag, flatbed trucks, and other uses. So we're excited for the investment, the opportunity in this community and hope the committee or the commission will be supportive of this project. Happy to answer any questions, though.
Thank you, Ms. Horstman. Any other questions for the applicant? If not, we'll go ahead and open it up to the public. I don't see any speaker slips. I don't know if there are none. Is there anybody online that'd like to weigh in? Nope. Okay, I'll go ahead and close the public portion of this agenda item and bring it back to the commission for a motion, discussion, or...
Well, I'll just comment that it seems like a compatible use out here. It makes a lot of sense. You know, the study session that we had was helpful even on smaller items like this because it makes our job today a lot easier. So very thorough. I don't have any concerns, so I definitely see myself supporting this project.
Commissioner Mahajer?
Thank you. Yeah, I also think it's compatible with the other adjoining land uses. At the study session, my concern was traffic, but you know, with the numbers provided, that doesn't seem to be detrimental at all, so I think I could support this as well.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, the only thing that always kind of sticks in the back of my head is it's not permitted use in this area, but I know we've found, we've made findings on different other parcels in the city and this is very specific to this parcel, so yeah, I can see myself supporting this as well. So that said, I'll call for a motion.
Chair, I'll make a motion. I move that we approve plan development permit, PD 2023-0012, and conditional use permit, U2023-0005.
Do we have a second?
Second.
May we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Blanco?
Aye.
Commissioner Mahajer?
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye. The conditional use permit passes. Thank you very much. All right, we will move on to other business or reports from Planning Commission and staff. Thank you, Commissioner Lopez, members of the commission. No oral reports, but I can go over future meetings. Tomorrow, we have a study session with the Planning Commission that will be at 1:30 and held at Shepherd Hall. And then future meetings, we're looking at an October 18th meeting, a Planning Commission meeting here in the chambers, starting at 6:30. And then an additional study session on October 19th. And again, that will be in Shepherd Hall, starting at 1:30. And that concludes staff's reports. Thank you, Frank. Any commissioner have anything they'd like to discuss? Okay, seeing none, I'll go ahead and close this meeting. Meeting's adjourned. Thank you.